Reverend Sarah Box, if she would come forward and bring the invitation. Thank you, Sarah, for being here.
You are welcome. Please bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for the chance to be able to come together, Lord, unified in our love for the city of Perry. We ask for your hand upon the conversations that are handled tonight. May there be clarity of speech. May there be hearts that are soft to respond and to hear what is being conveyed. And, Lord Jesus, I just ask for you to move through all that is discussed tonight. May your will be done. May your love be responded to and be spoken and to be received. We love you, Lord, and we place all of this in your hands. And we ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Sarah, your excuse to go to the football game. Call meeting to order at seven o'clock. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, we would take your roll copies.
Mayor Hammond.
Here.
Larry Hammer.
Here.
Mike Connell. Bob Porter. Chad Fuller.
Here.
Jacob Hucker.
Here.
Misty Lidle.
Here.
Ms. Ann Swerley. And Cheryl Serson.
Mike Connell is, as we know, at football. He's coaching until November, but we'll excuse him for that. Looking now for approval of the agenda from the last meeting, but we also need to approve the agenda from the meeting before that. So whoever wants to.
I move that the agenda be adopted as soon as possible.
We have a motion from Misty, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And can somebody do that same thing for me for the previous meeting, please?
I move to suspend the rules, waive the reading, and approve the minutes from the August 1st, 2024 regular meeting and the August 15th, 2024 meeting that was informational meeting only due to the lack of quorum.
I start with that. I have a motion from Larry and seconded from Misty. And this is to approve both August 1st and August 15th minutes. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And we are very honored and privileged to have here tonight Senator Sam Singh and his son. And welcome. Very nice to have you here today.
Thank you very much, Mayor Hammond and members of council. Thank you for the opportunity for me to be here. One, an hour a year and a couple of weeks from the tornado that came through the community. And I know it was a difficult time for the city as you dealt with that emergency. But I want to thank the mayor and the staff here at the city of Perry for working with us and keeping us sort of up to date on what the needs were here in the community. I know there was a number of us, including my partner in this house, Representative Begol, who were talking to our state people about how maybe we could get this at a federal level to be recognized by FEMA. Obviously, there's a lot of rules, regulations, and red tape that prevented that from happening, even though there were other parts of our state that saw some of that relief. And so that meant we had to go through a different path to help out the city. I did want to acknowledge that, you know, within, especially in the state senate, my colleague, Sarah Anthony, who is the chair of the appropriations process, our friends at state police, who were very supportive of this emergency relief set of resources that we were able to, as you all know, in the budget, find $200,000 to be dedicated specifically here for the city, especially as you had some insurance resources come through, but that this should hopefully cover a lot of the remainder for the repairs that were happening at DPW and so forth. And so we wanted to come out here today and just formally present to you a commemorative check from the state of Michigan for $200,000. And obviously, the transfer will happen in a more electronic way.
That'd be great. I'm going to ask our DPW superintendent, our treasurer, and our chief of police, if they would please come up here too, so that this, everybody gets on camera for this, because it was truly a team effort and continues to be a team effort. Why don't you come around? We have.
Do you want me to come around as well?
No, 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 no. I want you right up here. So we are good. So on behalf of the city of Perry, our council, and our employees here at the city, thank you for making this happen, because without you, I don't think it would have.
Thank you. All right, I'll present this formally, and then we'll go through there. And I just also want to just thank, obviously, the emergency services here in the community, the chief, and the fire department, all the work that sort of happened amongst a number of members of the region that came down to help. And we're here, and thank you for all of your time today.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
There's one more.
Yeah, there you go. And I'll call on Chief Box to introduce Dave from CNN.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to introduce Officer Dave Salamas from the Canadian National Railroad. I've known him for several years now, and he's an excellent asset that we have here in the city with the railroad traversing or the dissected middle of our city as it does. So he's here to speak about some rail safety initiatives.
Councilman Mayor, thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you for being here.
The reason I'm here is we've got Rail Safety Week coming up, and it's September 23rd through 29th, 2024. And we're asking that you guys pass a proclamation supporting Rail Safety Week. Safety at CN drives our every move. So anything you see on the rail, we're thinking safety before we even move those cars or those trains. It's very important that we do that. You see me frequently. I'm at milepost 240, which is the M-52 crossing. I'm submitted to a traffic enforcement. Don't have an opportunity to stop a lot of cars. That's a good thing. So, but what we do at CN, especially in the police department, we champion education and awareness campaigns. So Rail Safety Week, we champion the campaign for Operation Lifesaver, See Tracks, Think Train. We do community and school presentations. Last year, I did a presentation for about 25 law enforcement officers upstairs for our risk program, which is Rail Safety Initiative for Police and Fire. We do our enforcement initiatives. Like I said, we're at crossings every day enforcing traffic law across our crossings and near the property and also keeping people off the tracks. Anybody on the tracks trespassing, that's not supposed to be there. So also, we do special safety events and proclamations, and that's what we're asking for, ladies, a proclamation from you guys supporting Rail Safety Week. But we were at your national layout. I try to get there every year. I wasn't able to be here because I had to be about three places at once because there aren't a lot of CN police officers left. So there's about eight in the state, and we're all over the state. So I cover all of southern Michigan. So, but again, we're asking your support for a proclamation for Rail Safety Week. If there's any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any council have questions for Dave? I think you all have a copy of that proclamation.
It was a model proclamation, so I'm correct.
See Tracks, Think Train.
Stay off, stay away, stay safe.
Okay, we're good then. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much for allowing me to.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. We'll now open the floor for public comment. Is anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, we will move on to communications. Shirley?
So I handed out a notice for the special ordinance meeting that's going to be September 12th at seven o'clock here in council chambers. You also receive a letter from a resident regarding the ordinance, a flyer from the DPW regarding this engineering wish list, and then a flyer for the car show that's going to be on September 21st at 10:03 here at City Hall.
Thank you, Shirley. Department head reports. Megan, would you like to go first?
Good evening. We racked up audit field work at the end of August. They were doing it for three days. I feel like everything went well. About early last week, five of our CDs matured. They earned just over $11,000 in the last six months. I have reinvested five of those CDs, sorry, four of those CDs, all of them except for motor pool funds, for another six months at 4.05% interest. And then, if you remember, a couple of months ago, we approved a new financial institution, Consumers Credit Union. So I did move a portion of our motor pool cash and general fund cash balances to money market accounts at consumers at 4.75% interest. That rate's locked in for a year. And that is all I have for you right now. No big projects going on. I'll let Chad cover the playground. Lots of cool activity happening out there.
Any council members have questions for Megan?
I assume the audit went okay?
As far as I know, they're still doing work back on their end. I think I only heard one question from them since they've left, though. And I'm really going to stand and push to make sure it happens a lot sooner than the last week of December. Because I do not like that stress.
Thank you, Megan. You're welcome. DPW Superintendent Kevin Tyler, you're up.
Hello. Still waiting for the delivery of the generator. Delivery date was supposed to be around the first of this month, but it got pushed back a little bit. We haven't heard about the card reader door access, the key card access for this building. As far as I know, we're still waiting on hardware for that project. No movement on the brush pile. Last time I was here, we talked about some movement. It was a big buildup to nothing, so still waiting on that. Hopefully, with the funds that we've received, we can use a portion of that to maybe hire someone else to do the job. We did an extra round of brush chipping last week following the windstorm to help get things cleaned up, ease the burden on people having piles in their yard. We did soil testing last week for the DPW build site. We're still waiting for results on that. I think everything went well. They didn't find any surprises. I know Chad's probably going to touch on it, but the play escape project is mostly completed on our end. I feel like it went very well since we had zero experience building one of these things, but we had lots of instructions. So I feel like we did a pretty good job. My crew worked hard to make sure there was some progress on that and get it done. I believe the final piece of the puzzle that we haven't received would be the ground cover safety barrier. We had to have a service call on our bucket truck, which is quite old. It developed an oil leak, and we had somebody come up to take a look at it. And it's aging out. Parts are hard to find. I don't know if we'll be able to repair it or not, but we may have to sell it and look at other options, either renting something or buying something smaller down the road. We didn't budget for anything like that, so we'll have to explore options with that. We just found out yesterday that there's a seal at the top of the rotator for the bucket apparatus. And if they can't get a whole replacement unit, then we're pretty much going to be done with that bucket truck and be unsafe to use. So I don't want anyone getting stuck in the air or loss of pressure and someone falling hurt themselves. So we'll probably be looking at selling that in the future. Is there any questions for me?
Council, any questions for Kevin? Anything for Sam? Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Thanks, Kevin.
Shirley. Oh, sure. Let Kyle go first. Kyle, would you like to go?
Well, you want to go, right?
He couldn't hear you.
I do, but yeah.
Kyle's wife went to the football game. He wants to go to you.
Thank you, Shirley. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone, once again. I really don't have much of a report for you. I'd be happy to take any questions that you have for me of the police department. But I did want to talk about a couple of agenda items that are down under new business before I do take off. Under that new business, you'll see the possible approval of new police car radar equipment. That should be like slats equipment, because the equipment that goes into a new police vehicle now comes in at So that is, should all be in your packet. I reviewed that. That is pretty much standard equipment. The problem with this year's model of car is a lot of the equipment we have that we're taking out of the 2016 can't retrofit into the 2025 that we're going to get. So there's a little bit of an increase because of that. We are going to reuse the light bar that's on that 2016 police car, and they're going to give us new lenses so it'll look like a new car or a new light bar. So that will have a fresh look. But everything else is pretty much standard. I've gone through it, and I've actually reduced the original cost down to this from what they had because of something you didn't need or didn't actually have to install. The radar units, the cost should be in your packet as well, and that's very standard. In fact, that's a lot less expensive than what I anticipated it to be. We will be returning or trading in the current radar unit that's in the 2016 police car. So if you have any questions about that now, I can help you out. If you have any questions and don't feel comfortable passing it, I can come back and answer those for you at any other time. And then, I think, talked about the resolution for the See Tracks, Think Tracks. Oh, for almost two years, maybe more than two years, we have been in consideration of getting a new IT company for the city. Clerk Miller and I spearheaded that, tag teamed that together, and made a lot of good progress. And we were able to come to a resolution with the current company that we had that it would work to maintain that. They were in a transition phase. They basically, they didn't sell out, but they bought into a larger company, and there were some hiccups with that. We were anticipating those hiccups to go away. They have not gone away. If anything, they've maintained the same, which for the acceleration of technology and the use of technology, I feel like we backslid. So we are in need of a new IT company desperately. We're looking at tickets that are open when we call that are three weeks old before we get any resolution. It's just not acceptable. And if that ticket is resolved, it's because we called them and bugged them to get it resolved. And like, I'm not getting off the phone until you get me somebody who can help me. So that being said, we did put out requests for proposal. And we got one company to respond back, and it was a lot more money. Unfortunately, what we're finding is that quote that we got from that one company is right in line with what the company we're with told us we were going to be and what everyone else is quoting and bidding. So we decided to just hold off and see where that takes us. Then we had a company come in a few weeks ago. Just a cold contact. They made contact with Shirley, sat down. A veteran-owned company said, we'd like to do business with you guys if you're looking. And Shirley and I sat down for a Zoom meeting with them this week. We were really pleased with what they had and their response to how they do business. It was impressive, and it's really to the contrary of what we see now. So that being said, we are still in the market. And I don't want you to think that we've let this go. Like I said, it's been a couple of years. We really are in need of some adequate security and backup and support. I got a new, I'll just tell you guys, I got a new computer last week, and I can barely do my job in my office right now. I have to do it off my phone because I cannot get my desktop to relay the information that I had on it to what I need even now. So giving my email is just painful. Today, I finally got access to a state website that I needed to get access to, but it took four days to get that. So it's just, it's not acceptable. So we've got numbers. We've got things that we're probably going to present to you folks in a future agenda. It, they're not happy numbers, I'll tell you that. It was, it was hard to look at, but that's the reality of what that industry is doing and how they do business now. We've been spoiled with very low. Well, no, we've been spoiled with very small bills. I mean, the cost is low for what we have, but unfortunately, the service is even lower than what we're paying for. So I just wanted to put that out there as a primer, because we're probably going to have that on an agenda to discuss formally here coming up. I put RPFs out to five companies. I got one back, and then we got this cold contact. So we don't have a lot to go off of. But I just wanted you to know that we have been doing the work for a couple of years to get to this point when we do sit down and we discuss this stuff. It is, unfortunately, the world we're in right now as far as technology goes.
Knowing that we don't really have a solid proposal or anything to look at, I did have Shirley put in your packets the information from that company that they Zoomed with, BlackRock Technologies. So you'll have that to look at, and you can, at the end of our meeting tonight, if you want to talk about putting that on the agenda for next time, that's when we'll do that, since it's not literally on our agenda. But if you have questions for Kyle while he's here.
Sure.
More clarification than anything.
Sure.
A company that is not doing so well is one that we had for quite some time that then merged or somehow tied into another company.
Yes.
And that was probably a year or more ago now.
Oh, I think we're probably at two years now.
Two years, yeah.
Yeah, they've had plenty of time to work this out. They really have.
And what's the name of that one?
VC3.
VC3.
Yes.
So we keep them all straight.
Yep. IT Right was the premier IT company for municipalities in the state of Michigan, and they were housed and founded right in Bath. They were excellent to work with. They got really big. They looked for support. They looked to, not really outsource, but buy into this larger company for more support options. I don't know of anybody who's been pleased with that, to be honest with you. Anything that I missed regarding that?
I have a question, sir.
We're not taking questions from the, this is, this is a report.
In regards to IT.
We're not taking questions from the.
Public.
The public, thank you. Right now, they're in the state. We'll have another public comment at the end of the meeting. You're welcome to bring your question then. Anything else for Kyle?
No.
Thank you, Kyle.
All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. I would just like to remind everybody that there are two committees being formed, and we would welcome city of Perry residents who would like to serve on either of those committees. One is a grants committee, a committee being put together to work together to find grants, apply for grants. We do have a company that will actually write it, but we just need a group of people to work toward finding them. Ron Kraus, who's a city of Perry resident, has volunteered to serve on that. But we'd like two or three more people, so feel free to contact me by email or phone call if you'd like to do that. And then we're looking for people to serve with Bob Porter and Kevin Tyler, our DPW superintendent, to create a plan for, I don't even know what to call it, cleaning up the DPW grounds.
DPW, Tim Delu showed interest in that when I talked to him a few years ago.
Oh, did he? Then I.
We just happened to be talking, and that came out somehow. I don't know what, but.
Should I give him a call?
Please.
All right. So if you're interested in that, please contact me again, phone or email's fine. And that's all that I've had for Mayor's report. We'll move into committee reports.
On behalf of the ordinance committee, I just want to piggyback on Shirley's earlier comment with regard to the special ordinance open forum that we're holding next Thursday here in council chambers. We want to make certain that people understand that we're really focused at open forum to talk about the discussion that we've had ongoing with regard to the city's current ordinance regarding no chickens within the, within the city. We want to hear both from the folks that would like to see chickens, and we have heard that. We'd also like to see if the residents out there that prefer that we leave the ordinance stand as it is in place, just so we get a better cross-section of input as we go forward to make our ordinance committee recommendation to council.
Good, thank you, Larry. And I'm going to go back now to Shirley. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
When I called on her, she said, oh, go to Kyle, and then I forgot to.
That's all right. I just want to remind everyone that trash pickup is going to be Saturday instead of Friday this week because of the holiday. The day's pushed back a week. And also, Mayor Hammond did sign a quote for me to order a new tabulator. ICP2, it's called. I just had issues again on August 6th, and that's just time for something different. So I do plan on having a new combo for this next election, so I can use that old tabulator for that and a new source to come out and maybe I go through and make sure everything looks okay. They say it's good, but I don't trust them. So I don't trust it. So we'll just see what happens with the new one. And that should hopefully come in the next couple of weeks.
We did have that approval for that to be ordered on the agenda last meeting when we didn't have a quorum. So in an emergency, I'm authorized to approve those. So I approved it because if we didn't get it ordered, it wouldn't be here in time. So we wanted to make sure that came. So that's why I did it that way. Any other committee reports? Chad, if you've got some.
I would just like, yeah, I would just like to say something. Like Megan and Kevin have touched up on it too. The play equipment that was ordered and put up, I would like to really thank DPW for all their time and their great efforts that they did getting that thing up. And it looks really good. I don't know if any of you guys have gone out there and seen it, but it looks, it looks really good. So once we get the rubber mulch in there, I think it should be good to take the caution tape off and let it go.
Yeah, we'll have to have a formal unveiling with that immediacy that will invite them, and certain donor levels are going to be invited to that already. So as soon as we have a better timeframe for that, we'll make sure it's announced.
That's it.
Thank you. Chad? Any other committees? Looking at presentation and approval of the bills. And again, we have August 15th and September 5th.
We approve the bills as presented and paymentally authorized.
Second.
I have a motion from Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. I don't see that we have any old business, so moving into new business. We are happy to have here with us Brett Jones from the SEDP. And he met with Kevin and I and talked about what he's going to talk to us all about. So you can step right up and you may have the floor.
Good evening, thanks for having me tonight. Welcome. But I, I do think we had some information available in your packet, but just sort of the quick overview of what we're looking at is, the SEDP is the recipient of a site ratings grant from Michigan Economic Development Corporation, which basically allows us to invest anywhere in the county in either site-specific activities, which, you know, if you had an area, we're looking to develop a new industrial park, you could do environmental land study, that kind of thing. But the area I think that is probably of more interest to the City of Perry is that we can also use it to address citywide utility needs. So we know in previous conversations, both with Kevin and the mayor, that the water and wastewater systems of the city are nearing capacity and there may be the need for some looks at those in the future. So being aware of that need, we wanted to set aside some of this funding to at least offer the opportunity to the City of Perry, if there's anything we can do with those dollars to help your overall utility systems, you know, we'd like to partner on something. Really would be a partnership in here. It's your system, it's your engineering folks. We are just kind of a fiduciary for some grant funds. You know, we, like the mayor said, there's some informal conversations, but we wanted to just kind of offer this opportunity to the council as a whole, just kind of see if you have any questions, what the level of interest was and how, if you are interested, we move forward for tonight.
I think you all did get an overview from Brent, SEDP heading at the top from that. And then since the meeting with us, Kevin has put together what Brent told us to call a wish list. So Kevin's engineering wish list should also be in your packet somewhere, just added to that. And did we have one for Brent?
No, but I did. The wish list?
Yes.
That would just mean brainstorming.
Yes.
There's nothing set in concrete. And if anybody has any suggestion on what's a legitimate, what we should use these funds for, please feel free to include that.
Absolutely. And that, those are the words right out of my mouth, Kevin, thank you for saying that. This is a wish list, things that Kevin has thought that we could utilize this money for working toward projects, working toward getting something done, or a plan put together to apply for a grant. So many different things, and we could certainly add anything that you have on your mind as well.
I, I'd just like to add, I learned a little bit in discussions with you guys, and a large part of getting grant funding is a couple of things. We need money and we need some engineering and good planning done. So the fact that you guys are offering this is really awesome. So if we could get some plans put together for some projects, we have a good chance of getting grants. So it's, it's nice.
Anybody else have any comments for Brent, any questions for Brent?
A hundred and fifty thousand, that's up to, and that's specific for any utility sewer, water, anything like that, or is it beyond that scope?
The one thing I would kind of key in, I'm looking at the wish list Kevin put together here, as waterman replacements, we can't go to the level of construction for anything. This is really sort of planning, studies, testing.
Okay.
Broadly under that umbrella, yeah. If you want to go outside of water sewer, I say maybe case-by-case basis, let us know what you're thinking and we can, we can vet it out.
Okay.
So planning, studies, testing, engineering for a project so that, as Jacob said, we had then the details of a project ready so that if grant money was available that fit that, we could apply for.
If you can use these plans to leverage to other, to other programs, that's outstanding. We'd love to see that.
So it looks like three and four kind of fit that bill off of Kevin's list then.
Yeah, and I think one and two would be pretty clear-cut as qualifiers as well. The rate study I think is good.
Probably not six and seven.
The asset management plan I think would be a good use. And to be quite frank, I'm getting a little outside of my area of expertise. How much of this do you can do on a hundred and fifty? I have no idea. But again, if you want to prioritize within this list, you know, you can get to a point where you can take a bidding process and say itemize your response and we can kind of pick and choose from there.
Absolutely. Council, if, if we are interested in moving ahead with the, through the SEDP, Brent, what would our next step be? What do you need from us in order to move forward?
So because the grant's really already in place, and the one thing I, I think I've noted in here, SEDP would have to be the contractor and the fiduciary for the funds. For the grant side, I don't really think we need a lot beyond consensus. If for your policies, procedures, the way you do things, if you need something more formal, that, whatever you feel is appropriate.
Okay. Then we would just let you know, yes, we want to do this, we want to move ahead. And then you would hold our hand from there?
Yep.
Okay.
And I guess whose hand is that?
Is there a deadline or?
Yeah, we have to have the dollars spent, the work done. It's either the first or the 30th of next June. So we have about that much.
So then in this fiscal year, 2024 fiscal year or 2025, what are we in?
Twenty twenty.
Depends on where you live.
That's true.
But, but the term of the grant is active now, and like I say, it runs through next June, so.
All right, then I think council will put this on the agenda for next meeting for a decision, if that meets with your approval. So Shirley, if you would put that on the next. And then Brent will be in touch, all right?
Thank you.
Any questions in the meantime? I know Mayor Hammond knows how to get ahold of me and we're here to help, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think we need to have Kevin come forward again regarding possible approval of the well three rehab and talk to us about that.
I had two quotes given to us, one from Northern Pumping Well and one from Peerless Midwest. I wrote a letter of recommendation that was supposed to be presented at the last meeting, but I can give you the Cliff Notes here versus since we had to push it. I was recommending that we use Peerless, the price is a little bit more, if you look at the bottom line there for the rehab. This is routine maintenance, by the way. Wells run for so long, we test them every year, and after about 10 years, they need to be pulled and inspected and refurbished and reset. So this is routine maintenance. All the wells have to be pulled and inspected and rehab at some point. So this is time for well three, as a scheduled kind of a thing, give or take a year, depending on funding and various things like that. But I was recommending to go with Peerless. The last time we had Northern pull well four, we all know how that turned out, and now we need a new well four. I'm not blaming them, I'm not saying they did anything wrong, just saying that let's give Peerless a try and maybe we won't have to spend a hundred thousand dollars on every well. So that, that was my recommendation. Of course, feel free to ask any questions or I'll field any comments.
Do you have any experience with Peerless or any other municipalities that use Peerless? Kevin, I know we like to steer away from.
At my previous position with another community, we use them exclusively. And they, they did great work for us over the years. And we had virtually no callbacks, no issues. They always stood by their work and they always worked well with us. So I have no reservations about their qualifications.
Where's Peerless?
Their main branch is in Ionia, but they have one in Centerville as well. They're, they're big into fire suppression stuff for commercial buildings. They'll put in fire suppression wells, provide fire suppression to buildings that don't have any other options, that type of thing. They do a lot of that work as well as municipal well work and pump work as well.
So just, it's kind of a planned activity as you described. I'm assuming you've got funds in the budget to cover it.
We did, this is a budgeted item, like I said, it's routine maintenance, that one that we knew was coming. I'm getting it approved now, we're not necessarily going to do the work now, we're going to get it approved and have it ready to go. So when we're off-peak pumping season, then we'll be able to pull that rehab and we can get on the schedule, get it done. And as opposed to waiting until the spring and having to hurry, you can do it before the budget ends. So I'm trying to stay ahead of it on this, is why I'm bringing it to you now.
What is this option to televise after cleaning nine hundred dollars? What is, that's not in this 50, right? It's, that would be on, above and beyond that?
Correct, and that's a video inspection of the well casing that we did with well four.
We don't want to do that?
Um, it's, so after the, when they clean it, if there's a lot of evidence of metal flaking or, or debris that would yield that type of inspection, we, we would look further into it to verify that the well casing is, you know, sound. It, it's a good time to do it because you can't really do it in between when you pull the wells. It's, it's recommended, but not always a necessity. Me personally, I almost feel like it's cheap insurance.
We did well four after they pulled it, right? Saw a lot of shavings and debris.
We had to pull well four because it was flowing backwards into the well. There was a hole above the check valve, so we were getting negative flows into the aquifer. So that's, that's what prompted us pulling well four and then we found.
Then you found the case.
The corrosion and the, which led to us leading to the inspection, which led to us finding the perforated well casing.
So the 50,195, that's, you said that's not including the television thing, right?
Right.
So if we, if, if we wanted to do that, it'd be 51,095?
I believe that's how it's written up, yes.
Would the company doing the work recommend doing it if they felt that it was, there was something that was questionable? Or would they be just forthright in saying, this looks terrific, you don't need to do this? I mean, you, how does that usually work?
So when they remove the, this is a vertical turbine well, so they'll pull the motor and they'll pull the shaft and they'll pull the bolts. If there is an excessive amount of corrosion or pitting on the metals of those materials, then it would be recommended to inspect the casing. You can learn a lot during while the work is going on. And we could opt into that later and, you know, just report it to council if need be.
Is this a typical way that this type of work is presented on paper? By finishing with an option then to do that? Is it just they're saying, we'll, we'll look at it, see how it looks, and if we need to then televise it, then we'll have to add that in? So they're just saying that would be extra if it's needed? Is that how it's usually written out?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Some companies offer it, or they put it in their, in their list of, you know, as a line item, but it depends on, I didn't ask them to write it up that way, that's just how they present it, so.
Any other questions for Kevin about this?
I'll make a motion. If there's no further conversation. I move that we approve the quote from Peerless Midwest in the amount not to exceed $50,195, authorize Kevin Tyler to sign the quote, sign the quote, and move forward with the rehab.
Second.
We have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Larry. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is concerning the master plan that we had to set aside from the agenda last meeting. So now talking about possible approval and adoption of the master plan update.
This has been an ongoing activity on part of the Planning Commission. We've had reviews in here, the Planning Commission, and as part of the process, there was a 63-day public review option where the master plant draft was made available for public input over that, prior to that time, were a number of other inputs provided and avenues for public input. And we're now in the home stretch, if you will, to get an updated master plan for the city. I don't know if there's any questions, I'm kind of speaking on behalf of the Planning Commission right now.
That's fine, okay.
Are there any other questions?
I kind of just have a comment because I know we've had several discussions, public comments and things of the master plan. I think it's important to, again, reiterate the importance of the master plan so that we can go after grant and federal money and statewide money. Without a master plan, a lot of these fundings are not available. It's taken a long time to kind of get where we are, and the fact that we are finally here gets us kind of open for funding, so I'm really excited.
Exactly. It's got a lot of other, obviously benefits for the city, it's kind of a roadmap for the future, but one of those, as you say, Jacob, is in fact that we do, it does open us up for some grant opportunities that we here before had not had the same opportunity for.
The master plan update was done by a company that was hired by the city, or at least recommendations were made and worked with the Planning Commission. And I had hoped that maybe Planning Commission people would be here, and some of them were here last time, and then we couldn't approve it. But I'd like to publicly thank all of the members of the Planning Commission who worked so diligently toward this. I know Megan worked with them as well, helping with some of the MEDC work that connected to that. And Larry's on the Planning Commission. And then remind me of the name of the company that helped put this together.
McKenna.
McKenna.
McKenna did help other cities, it was one of the recommendations from the, the MEDC, Michigan Economic Development Corporation relative to that. And I correct you if I've got the wrong number, Megan, but I believe that as a result of the process, we did, or in the process of receiving, I believe it's $25,000 from.
The total master plan rewrite was $25,000. We're getting a grant for 75% of it.
Okay, thanks for correcting.
Just over $18,000, $18 and $18.
Yeah, the total cost from McKenna was $25,000 to assist us, and like Megan said, a portion of that either has already come back or will be coming back once we finally approved it, or a big portion of that.
And they, they were here, and one or two members from McKenna were out here in Perry, I'm going to say at least eight times. And this took place over about a year, wasn't it, in putting this together?
So it came to Summer Con night in 2023, they came to Christmas Fantasy in 2023, and that was just for the public input portion. They met with Planning Commission monthly.
Yep.
We have a survey online as well, a number of people did respond to, that was prior to the 63-day public comment, once we had a complete draft.
For those people who did put suggestions on the sticky notes on the boards, that was, who was putting that together. So thank you for that input as well. Council, any other thoughts or concerns?
I think there's one portion, I didn't quite speak this, redevelopment readiness, a part of that for, is it the MEDC?
Yeah, because the MEDC is redevelopment ready communities program on the essential pathway, so this will check a box. We're one step closer to that program.
So that basically would put us on a map for developers and other opportunities. So this is really my.
So this is really monumental for that portion of the process.
Yes, Jacob, thank you for that. Anyone else?
I move that we approve and adopt the following resolution. Whereas under the guidelines of the Michigan Planning Enabling Act and the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act, the city of Perry recognizes city desires to adopt a master plan in order to provide a vision for the future of the community, including the framework of an updated local zoning ordinance for the city. Whereas the planning commission conducted a public hearing at a duly noticed meeting on August 5th, 2024, to hear comments on the draft plan. Whereas the draft plan reflects the results of public input, now therefore the city council resolves to adopt the city of Perry master plan as presented to the board.
Second.
Is that you, Bob?
Yes.
Okay. We have a motion by Larry, seconded by Bob. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Now we'll move into the National Sea Tracks Think Train Week proclamation as it is on the agenda to pass or not the proclamation there.
There's no, I mean, there's no really requiring from us, right? We're just publicly stating we support it.
That's right, Jacob. We're just publicly stating that we support it. And I think you've got a copy of it in your packet. So we do have a resolution saying that we support this.
I can read this one off. I move that we approve the following resolution. Whereas Sea Tracks Think Train Week is to be held across the U.S. from September 23rd through September 29th, 2024. Whereas 2,192 rail grade, I think that's road guard crossings collisions resulted in 765 personal injuries and were responsible for 248 fatalities in the United States during 2023. And whereas 1,378 pedestrians trespassing casualties have occurred in the United States resulting in 663 pedestrians being killed, another 715 injured while trespassing on railroad property right of ways during 2023. Whereas educating, informing the public about rail safety, reminding the public that railroad right of ways are private property, enhancing public awareness of the dangers associated with the highway, rail grade crossings, ensuring pedestrians and motorists are looking and listening while near railways and obeying established traffic laws. Will reduce the number of avoidable fatalities and injuries caused by incidents involving trains and citizens. And whereas International Association of Chiefs of Police, National Operation Lifesaver Incorporated, United States Department of Transportation, and all local, state, county, and railroad law enforcement officers, first responders, and railroad safety to enforce applicable laws in support of National, National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. Therefore, we, the Perry City Council, council members do hereby attest our full support proclamating September 23rd through September 29th, 2024, National Sea Tracks Think Train Week. And we encourage all citizens to recognize the importance of rail safety education. We authorize Police Chief Kyle Box to sign the resolution.
Second.
We have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Chad. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you. The possible approval of the new police car radar equipment is what Kyle spoke to before he had to leave. And we have had some discussion on that, but is there any further discussion regarding
One thing I was a little, I just, he said something about he had a pricing of $13,000 and a quote we have here is significantly less than that. So I just want to, I guess, point that out. Is this?
He said that he had saved some money somewhere.
Yeah.
He did say that.
It's quite, quite different. So I just want to point that out, I guess. Because he's not here. I think he had stated $13,000, so.
I think there's, I'm guessing there's, I think there's two issues involved.
The cost to put all of the equipment into a new police car is $13,000. This is just for the radar and a ton of.
And he's reusing the other car. I mean, okay. So I just want, I move that we approve the purchase of the police radar equipment for the police, the new police car that is on order for capture electronics in the amount of $2,055. We authorize Police Chief Kyle Box to proceed with the purchase.
Second. We have a motion from Jacob, seconded by Misty. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. And moving on to the first reading of the zoning amendment 396.
Okay, this is, I'll speak on behalf of the ordinance committee. This is one that has been in here for discussion a couple of different times. And I want to highlight before I start actually going through and taking any questions, that this originally came about in terms of a review by the ordinance committee as a result of ordinance enforcement officer Ron Korzeki having some questions about what about utility trailers? And no place in our zoning ordinance do we have any reference made to utility trailers. And so a proposal includes, including utility trailers in addition to recreational vehicles in this ordinance. And as we went through it, we then suggesting a couple of minor modifications in that the current ordinance basically states there are maximum of two recreational vehicles allowed on residents' property. This, as you'll see as we go through, it actually is removing that restriction and defining a restriction in driveways and inside lots and no restriction in the number of recreational vehicles in the people's rear property. Previously, we had had a proposal in here that included the fact that we thought that the vehicles, recreational utility trailers had to be owned by either the property owner or the renter. We've since revisited that and removed that stipulation. So that is, that potential change has been removed. So fundamentally, we've added utility trailers and made some reduction and restriction in terms of the number of units allowed. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Larry.
Hearing none, I move the following ordinance, zoning ordinance amendment 396, section 3.23, storage and parking of recreational vehicles, utility trailers and equipment be placed on the next agenda for adoption. The city of Perry ordains the city of Perry zoning ordinance, section 323, storage and parking of recreational vehicles, utility trailers and equipment is amended as follows. Section 3.23, storage and parking of recreational vehicles, utility trailers and equipment. Recreational vehicles, utility trailers and equipment within all residential zone districts shall be subject to the following regulations. A, storage in a residential district shall be allowed only when it is accessory to the principal use of the lot or adjacent lot when owned by the same person. Recreational vehicles, utility trailers and equipment being stored. That.
That's supposed to be taken out.
That is taken out. I'm sorry. Must be owned by the, lot owned by the same person. B, no storage shall be permitted closer than five feet to any dwelling unit nor closer than three feet to any side or rear lot line. C, storage or parking of recreational vehicles shall not be permitted on vacant lots or parcels. D, all such vehicles shall remain unoccupied and shall not be connected to sanitary sewer facilities or have a fixed connection to electricity, water, or gas. One, exceptions, parking and occupancy of a recreational vehicle on private property shall be permitted for a period of seven days and no more than one such period in 30 consecutive days. Any extended stay shall be subject to regulations established in section 3.18. E, all recreational vehicles and equipment slash utility trailer shall be parked or stored unless otherwise permitted hereafter in the following manner. One, in an enclosed building such as a garage, or two, in a rear yard or side yard subject to the following limitations. All such vehicles and equipment shall be parked or stored no closer than three feet from any window or door of any building or closer than five feet from any dwelling unit. B, all such vehicles and equipment shall be parked completely within the boundaries of the lot and shall not block a public sidewalk. Three, upon an established driveway in the front yard, provided parking or storage in enclosed building is not possible and therefore, excuse me, and there is no parking or storage space available in the rear or side yard, or there is no reasonable access to either rear or side yard, subject to the following limitations. A, such vehicles and equipment shall be parked completely within the boundaries of the lot or parcel and shall not block a public sidewalk. B, no more than two items of recreational equipment utility trailer shall be permitted to be parked or stored upon any established driveway at any one time. For purposes of this limitation, recreational equipment used in conjunction with other recreational equipment such as a boat momma on a boat trailer shall be considered as one item of recreational equipment. F, no more than a total of two items of recreational equipment shall be permitted or parked or stored inside lot lines at any one time. G, recreational and camping equipment shall be parked anywhere in public, or excuse me, on owner's premises for loading or unloading purposes for a period of not more than 48 hours. H, recreational vehicles, utility trailers must be kept in good repair and carry a current year's license plate and/or registration. I, or by reason of exceptional shalliness or shape of a specific lot, field, site, or tract of land, or by reason of exceptional topographic conditions or other extraordinary and exceptional situations or conditions of such particular property, a regulation enacted would result in a peculiar and exceptional, particularly difficulties to undo hardship upon the owner of the recreational equipment, the Board of Zoning Appeals may permit a variance from the provisions of this chapter upon application of the owner. This ordinance shall take effect 30 days from data, 30 days from data publication.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Misty, was that you?
Yes.
We have a motion made by Larry, seconded by Misty. All those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Larry. That was a long one. Now we'll move into any other business that may come before counsel. I think we did talk about a couple of things that we're going to ask to have on the next agenda. Counsel, does anybody have anything else that needs to come before counsel at this We'll move then into our second public comment. I think there was a lady in the back who had something she wanted to bring. Janice, did you?
I'm waiting now.
Sorry, you missed the first one.
That's okay. I was, I was running late. Busy all day. Good afternoon, authorities, government. Glad you're asking for a public comment. In regards to the WOW, WOW has been sold. And you guys have, I'm having trouble with my internet.
Yeah.
And everything, I mean, it's going haywire.
I know.
So the government here has contracted with WOW for 25 years. And that's prevented competition moving in here, like Charter Communication, they're three miles north of us, but they can't come down here because WOW, you put them with a contract for 25 years. And then you put, they don't have any phone system. So then you contracted with TDS for 25 years. So when I moved here seven years ago, I had Comcast and I had Charter up north when I lived up there. And he said that I could have internet, TV, and phone when I moved over here, the rep from WOW. I get in, I've got all this stuff paid up forward and move in and bang movers and trucks and you had, you name it. And he calls me, oh, Jan, you want us to set up your, your internet right now? I said, no, I'm not even on that. He said, oh, I forgot to tell you. We don't provide phone system. I mean, I was thinking I could transfer my phone number here through that, you know. Oh, we forgot to tell you. Yeah, you can't, you gotta go through TDS. Call them for phone. First of all, they have a VoIP phone. Secondly, it's $39 for local calling and $84 out of state. And most of my relatives are in Florida or California or somewhere, or up north. So that's not a good service for a little community, I don't think. I mean, I lived in Acme, north of Traverse City, and we had Turner and phone, internet, whatever. So that's the one question that I had. And since they've sold it, why can't we change? Or is that what everybody was talking about? Because I've missed meetings here, you know? So I don't know. I'm not up to whatever here, knowing what all you're doing with some other IT or whatever it was that the police officer was talking about. But I think that we should break the contract with WOW and TDS and allow competition to come in here. Comcast, Charter, they'd be more than happy to give us a full service. And I know that, you know, I asked, well, you guys got the fiber optics. You know, that, I called that guy, he wouldn't run about two blocks, but he went for the government, you know? So they don't have TV or internet anyway, I don't think. It's just, what is it, internet?
They have internet and telephone.
And it is quite kind of expensive.
They're not all throughout the city yet.
Okay. But will they be?
I don't know.
I don't know either. Yeah. So anyway, that was one.
So on that, real quick, Daystar is the company we're all talking about. Daystar did hold a public outing. You know, they're trying to collect, you know, which areas, you know, have a need. And if there is enough need in certain subdivisions or streets, they are looking for that.
Well, good.
She has been very involved in the last few events. So if you'd like to talk to her.
Who?
Her name is Katie.
Katie.
Katie Nichols. She's the local sales representative for Daystar. She's been, she's been at all of our local events. At the city, the night out, and she may even be at the Halloween event. It's not the city, the city event, but it is her, you know, public event. So.
That will be a loss for internet. That's all I have is internet.
Okay.
My phone, so I don't, I have a cell phone.
Janice, if you want to give Jacob your internet, just write it down for him over here.
Yeah, I can email.
Then he'll email you her contact information.
Okay, sure. Well, the other thing that I overheard here is about the, and I won't get, I haven't gotten to what I want to talk about yet, but.
Jan, and I'm going to interrupt. But you have five minutes. You have about three left.
Three left? Okay. Let me go to my issue that I want to present, and I have a copy of it. For the last three years, our apartment manager at Washington Square Apartments and Cherry Hill have been increasing our rent twice a year. They discount our, I get certified in June, and then we get a letter in October saying they're increasing the rent. And that will start January 1st. And if you don't start paying at January 1st, you'll be evicted. So they just sent us this yesterday. They're increasing it $70. One-bedroom senior, which is where I live, out in Washington Square, will go from $515 to $585. One-bedroom for, and the high-end according to income would be $627. For us, and a one-bedroom at Cherry Hill will be $657. Two-bedroom will be $682. And then they're giving, Cherry Hill has forced natural gas. We have all-electric. My bill, I just got $69 for the heat wave we went through this month and 60 bucks for the last one. So I pay $450 plus. So, I pay $450 plus heat electric bill. And we're rural housing, and I spoke with Megan about it, and she said that, well, if we don't, see, what they do is they increase this because they're a subsidized apartment complex business. And they only pay 10% to the city of Perry. Then they pay 40% of that $30,000, I say, because they pay 10% of their gross income, which runs around $300,000 for the two buildings. And they don't pay any taxes to them, they pay it to the city of Perry. Then Perry treasurer, she sends off $40, $40,000, 40% to the state of Michigan general fund. And then they pay $1350 out of the $13 million it costs a school to run, they only paid $1350. And so, and it's hard to break, I mean, she's got the form that I'd like for all of you to look at, how it's broke down, what they, what she pays out, and then how much the city of Perry is to keep of the money. We don't get a discount. We don't get a property tax refund because they are not paying enough taxes, according to Michigan. And so, we can't get a property tax refund. We can get a heating thing if you make a real, real low income. So, this is, and so, actually, why they do it, it's not going to maybe change our rent that much, especially for the really low income that are paying about $190, and I pay $450, which isn't bad. I'm not saying it's, it's not going to break in me, but electric heat is, and electric air conditioner is. But anyway, they, they will make this, see, why they increase it is that whatever that person's paying, whether they're paying $450 or $190 or $120 or $300, they will make that up. The state of Michigan and the federal government will pay them the difference. And that's why they do it, basically, is so that they, they're going to be assured of what we pay them plus what the government's going to subsidize them for. And that's how this country's running right now. So, anyways, it's ran that way a long time. But if, if you canceled their, you have power and control over their 10% subsidy. And you could cancel it at any time. But if you were to do that, she thinks that they would not have, they would have to pay more taxes and our rent would go up. We're on rural housing, honey. You can't increase it like that.
You wouldn't qualify for rural housing if they weren't part of the pilot program. That's how they can be rural housing, is because they get this tax break.
No, that's, no, they are rural housing. I've lived in rural housing, many of them. And I've got applications and other ones, and they're the same cost that I'm paying. And some even cheaper, some more expensive, yes, if they're on tax credit. There's tax credit and various things. So, I don't know, you know, I don't mean to dispute it, but I'm telling you, they can't increase $70 for anybody's rent.
Janice. I would suggest.
A month.
I would suggest that perhaps you contact an attorney. We have no control over what you pay for rent. We do not control it, we do not affect it, we cannot cancel what we have a contract with that company for.
You can't? Well, the state of Michigan says you can. But you don't want to because the other businesses.
Janice, your time is up.
Okay, well, the thing of it is.
We were more than generous with your time.
Yes, you were.
And we appreciate you're having difficulty, but we don't have any control over that.
You get the subsidy, that's the control you have over it.
Anyone else for a public comment tonight?
Hi.
Hi.
Kristin Gabel. I really don't have a comment per se, I just have a couple of questions. One is clarification about the trailer ordinance. You said that you, we took it out, or you guys took it out, that the trailer had to be registered to the property owner? Is that correct?
Yeah, just to clarify, it was not, it is not in the current ordinance. We had proposed in a revision that came forward, we had proposed that it be owned by either the owner of the property or the renter of the property. Based on further discussion, we, as an ordinance committee, removed that proposed change. So, the.
I'm glad, because that was, I did see an issue with that, because, I mean, kids have been asking, Mom and Dad, can I store my boat behind your garage throughout time?
That's some of the, just to clarify, it's some of the discussion that we had. So, it is, the proposal that we read tonight does not put a limitation on that it must be owned by the owner of the property or renter of the property.
Awesome, I like that.
I think we had like four rounds of that, because I have a wonderful, right?
This has been brought forward a number of times with some iterations and changes. Basically, we added utility trailers, which are pretty common that residents have, that wasn't covered. And we basically, previously, the ordinance that's on the books right now says you can have no more than two recreational vehicles on your property. Basically, we said, the proposed ordinance we read tonight says you can have up to two in your driveway, meaning the perimeter area, and up to two in total in your side yards.
Yeah.
And we're not putting any recommendation or restriction on what you could have in your backyard.
That's good.
As long as you're away from the property lines, it's fine.
All right. And also, I want a clarification of what time the meeting is next Thursday.
Pardon, I'm sorry?
What time the meeting is next Thursday?
The open forum is 7:00 p.m. next Thursday.
Try to stick with the same time, so it'd be easier to remember.
Bam, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for a public comment tonight? Agenda items for our next meeting, we will put the review and discussion of BlackRock Was there anything else that we wanted to have?
Oh, the SEDP.
Oh, yes, talking whether we'd want to move ahead with the SEDP grant or the wish list.
And then the amendment.
The amendment?
The zoning. The number, what did you say, number six?
Oh, to approve it, yes. Okay, thank you.
Do we need to put anything on there about the dedication to the playground equipment that Megan was talking about?
I don't have a time graph for that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, we're still waiting for the chopped up stuff that goes on the flooring, so we can't let the kids on it until we have that.
So, we still got another Perry ride and put your best face.
October, or September. September. I'm sorry. Hold on just a minute, yes, September.
So, that'll be only in October, right?
So, September is, oh, yeah, my channel, I already texted him and reminded him. So, so that.
I don't know if it's an agenda item for next meeting, but I do know that Amy Buck, Amy's down on that, she is starting the fundraising, if you'll call it that, getting businesses involved for the Halloween event. That is a business ran event. She reaches out to all the businesses to get fundraising, money that she takes, buys prizes, gets businesses set up with events and stuff. She had reached out to me last night, actually, I owe her a call back. But just something to keep in mind through a business owner and watching this or here today, you know, that's going to be happening in October.
It's always a big event.
Yeah, bigger every year.
Yeah, it's huge.
She does a good job.
Wonderful. That's great. I'm so glad to see the businesses come together for that type of thing. Super. Then I think we talked about any other business, council discussion, public comments, we've been through that, agenda items. I believe we are adjourned at 8:17. Thank you all.